All right, we'll call the meeting of the workshop together. And we appreciate you getting place here.
I have my hammer.
I'm not a hammer.
Here.
It's over here.
Why don't you put it on?
If I have to hit anybody. You have my hammer over there. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We're glad that you've come to be with us. This is our quarterly workshop for our employees. And we don't have any agenda other than just the department heads. And we cannot take action other than to refer something to the consent agenda or to the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, with that said then, we'll start. The first one that's on is Mr. Smith in the B and D chief. Welcome.
Thank you.
Give us a good report.
All right, well, we've had no fires inside of our town limits that we can, I can just say, we've had two structural fires, one in Buckhorn area and the other on the backside of Orange Hill. We've had a couple downed trees. And I don't believe we've had any accident calls this past quarter. So we're doing all right. Town's doing all right. As far as equipment, it is now time to service our fire truck and our tanker. I've asked Steve to kind of get us an idea of what that's going to cost. And I'll need y'all's approval for that whenever it's time. We can either do it, we can spray it out, or we can go both at the same time, whatever y'all prefer, but it's something that's got to be done. The fire truck hasn't been serviced in five years, so it's time.
And when you say service, you're talking about the whole?
Check oil change. Now, you gotta remember that thing, we don't put a lot of miles on it, so it's just, you know, it's just time.
I'm trying to distinguish between just that routine and something we're going to go into pumps and things like that.
No, just servicing or oil change filters, fuel filters, stuff like that. As far as our station, we're still waiting on our racks to come in. I called and checked on them yesterday. And they're still having stuff come over from across the ocean. The last parts for our buckle year racks should arrive, I believe they said, on the 12th. And then it'll ship out. So we should have all of our final equipment that we ordered off of that grant minus the generator, which has already been ordered but won't be here until next year. That grant be finalized. We will have everything bought that money spent. So everything we intended on doing to the stations is pretty much there. I'd like to do one more thing, if that's possible, and that would be to buy a used front load dryer. Because we have a washing machine, we have a dryer box that's strictly for our gear. It doesn't serve heat, so we can't throw our underwear in and expect to get them back in the next few hours. So if I could ask for $200, I will buy a reasonably cheap dryer for our guys. You know, that'll dry socks and underwear and stuff like that after fire, after we, or after standing in the rain, stuff like that.
Regular clothing?
Yeah, regular clothes. So that's really the only ask I have from y'all other than doing services on the trucks.
You said the building was, you think good, you're not finding any glitches or any, any punch, you got punch list or create the punch list?
The only thing we have a problem with is moisture. There's mold building up around the air conditioners, the air conditioner outlets. And that's just from, that's from heat. The only way, I talked to the contractor, he said the only, he said because the upstairs is basically wide open, it's collecting heat from the top and it's collecting heat from the bays. So basically, it's acting like a cooler would do. You know how a cooler will condensate to the outside? That's kind of the same idea. It's condensating around the walls.
The day of the dedication, someone was, I don't know if he was with the contractor or not, but he said that he thought he might have some solutions. Have you heard anything?
Well, his solution, yeah, he told me, that was who I was referring to. His solution was, we could, we can put some blinds up top would help block off some of that heat going inside. Or even tinting those upstairs windows. And putting in a mini AC, one of those little small, little small mini boxes, we have one on the backside for that back room. Something to, just to kind of keep that at a mild temperature up top. And he said that would do it. But the cheapest thing we can do is put blinds. We can do that for about $100.
If we, if we, we can do it instead, if we can do that, if it don't work, we can graduate to something else.
Yes.
Will the dehumidifier work?
It's kind of like EOC. EOC's having the same problem we have. And they actually have a, they do have a dehumidifier, but it's sucking out the top of the attic. They, they're doing some strenuous things. I don't know.
We had heating and cooling problems, I heard, almost from the beginning. But I, I did know, of course, I've been out of contact, but I think they've had some old problems too.
But I don't know, that's, that's, the cheapest thing we can do is put some blinds up up there just to scale down the heat. And we're leaving our doors closed out, you know, in the bays as much as possible. That way it'll keep any heat from building up in there. And we're keeping the evac fan on pulling any heat out of the building, out of the bays. So doing everything we possibly do at this point.
Did you change the banquet date?
Yes, we did. Doing Friday night, the 17th?
16th.
16? 16?
It's my birthday.
Birthday is certain part of family.
Why the 16th?
The reason being is, there was something going, you know, every, you know, with the lighting ceremony and everything else, so that was, that was the most open for our group to have.
What was that day?
December 16th.
On Wednesday night?
Friday.
Oh, December, okay.
December, no, Friday night.
That's right.
And the last thing that you said there is important, and that's coordination of effort. And, and we hope that we'll be reciprocating in the future when there's something being planned by some of the other organizations that would ask us and all. And I appreciate, I appreciate you not conflicting with something that's going to be going on already. That's, I think that's good and it's going to be one of those things.
Also, whenever they're doing the lighting ceremony, they, we told everyone to probably sell hamburgers that night, that way there's food out there available.
Sure.
And speaking of food, the 12th, for lunch, we are going root plates.
November?
Uh?
November 12th.
November 12th. We're going to sell root plates here in front of our station.
That's on. That's Saturday.
That's next Saturday.
That's next Saturday.
Okay.
I was waiting to get past this meeting so I could advertise. Figured I'd let you on first, at least.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. I have one more thing.
Sure?
Yeah, I said, yes, sir, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Y'all hired me to do a job, and I'm going to do that job. What I ask is, I want one message to come from that building to this building. And I want that message to come from me, that y'all hired me to do. Any of my people call you, if it ain't to complain about me, then they probably don't have all the information, and I ask you to ignore that. 90% of our problems come from people talking outside of this room. And I don't want that. We gotta stop. So I'm asking each one of you to let me do my job. And I will. But let me bring the message to y'all of what we're doing. That way you have all of the information in front of you in this meeting. But side conversations is killing us.
I think, I think all the heads up here nodded in unison.
I agree.
I agree.
You all work together and we're close on.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything from your staff, people that you brought with you?
No.
Mr. Parks, anything for the, anything for the fire department? Any comments, questions, or anything? Fire Department? Yes, sir. Anything you would ask the chief?
No, he asked my question, that's why it's here.
Mr. Carter?
I'm good.
Mr. Wolf's name?
I'm good.
Let me mention a couple of things. One of the things I'd like, and you can tell me this one now, our reports being submitted timely, we have gotten several issues with that to the point that our attorney recently said that the funding contract is between the county and the city, but part of that contract calls for timely reports. And that has not been the case.
Well, it's kind of a two-way street with them getting our calls to us so we can make sure that we're, that we're getting our times put on the report to send it back to them. So it's kind of, it's two-way street with them over the EOC. But we do our job, and we'll do it better.
Okay. If that's the case, then if you're going to be the one to bring us the message, that's the message I need to hear.
Yes, sir.
We've got two-way problems. We need to hear both of them and check on each other.
And I'm, we have, they have a new coordinator, Sam Justin Leach, and me and him's talking back forward now, and we're getting better.
You see, you see that getting better?
Yes, sir.
And I think what, I think what you're talking about is so the council, is the dispatch does a time in, time out, and things like that, they do a record up there because that's the official records of the county. But for them to give us a report, when that bell goes off, they don't pick up their clock and say, I'm starting on it. And they call back into dispatch and your case is sent to the EOC.
We don't, we don't get those calls every call. We do, we get them in batches. They'll send us an email with a batch of our times, and we have to use that.
Okay. So if they're, if they're a month or six weeks behind, you're going to be a month or six weeks behind?
Yes, sir, so are we.
Were we aware of that?
No, that was not all our intention.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
It was all felt.
They insisted on, on blocking the time. That was on them.
Okay.
But when we get them, we will, we will make sure our reports are timed.
Do we need to invite the coordinator to be with us at some meeting in the future and see, see where we are in those things?
I think that would probably be a good idea, but I think everything is getting better out there right now. There was some analysis between our department and.
I understand.
And EOC, you know, it was just.
Well, there's a person, and that person's gone, and so is another person, so let's just, let me try.
That's, that's what we want you to do.
Right.
Okay. Reports on time. Could you include maybe just sticking in Margaret's box or something, she can make us a copy?
They did, well, we mentioned doing paper reports, they didn't like that idea. They want it done electronic?
No, I ain't talking about that.
I was, I'm sorry.
Give me a rip. Could you get us a, a new roster, complete with active, inactive qualifications?
We finished it up Monday night, it's ready.
Okay, I want to do, I want to know who's FF1, FF2, who's in training, who's the officers. And I'd like to know how many runs that our people are, we've got 20 on the roster, is that about right?
Pretty close, but I mean.
If we got 20 on the roster, and we got four that's making runs, I'm interpreting the attorney to say that we can, we can lessen, lessen the roster because we've got workers' compensation out there, and we've got, we've got 20 people and five or six or eight are making the runs, and some of them are making every one, or some are making every one. We need to know, active needs to mean active. It needs to mean that, and they don't have to go to the fire. They may come here to make coffee and give it if y'all would come back in, but they need to, they need to respond, and they need to do something if they're going to be a fire fighter. That's my opinion. I'm not.
Yes, we'll look back and look at our roster one more time, and if that's the case, we will move some to reserve act.
Okay. I don't know if everybody feels that or not, so if you want to say something, that's just my opinion, I think we ought to know who's.
That's a good plan.
I think we ought to know, if you own the fire department, you're going to let it just get a jacket and hats and do something.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's kind of, but then when ISO comes and does their inspection, and they want to see as close to 20 as possible on their inspection, so it's kind of a, it's kind of catching me too, so it's just.
Our last ISO was about three years ago.
I thought it was once you ran.
We got one just a little while back, a single, been a single year?
Almost three years, it's changed. Yeah, so it's been almost three, they should.
I think the last, the last time I was aware, Sam was working on it, he hadn't been real active in almost two years.
That might be in fact two years, I don't know.
Into three years.
I know Sam did, and I did.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't sound down either.
Beck was there.
That was that year.
It was almost three years ago.
Yeah, because burning had, a year before, and our, so it's time.
It's time for that.
Next year, yeah, that'll be coming up shortly.
Okay, well, before it comes, let us know what your roster looks like, and let us, you make suggestions to us about, well, they haven't been the minimum, they're doing something else, but let's see what we can massage to make it work. But we don't need, you know, you stood, part of the funding form, depending on how many people's on the roster, we had a department that had 30 people on the roster, 40 people on the roster making. And I'm not sure that all of them, they was even on the roster. But we just want to be, we just want to be careful that we're ensuring, suit we need to be ensuring. One little thing that I forgot what it was. Oh, the last thing I think I have is, I want to commend you on your opening remarks, and I want to commend you on the fact of the message needs to come from you to us and from us back to you. And our message, I may, I may talk to you about a suggestion, or any of us can talk to you about suggestions, or ask you a question, or talk to you about what we perceive as a problem, or things like that. But unless we're together and vote on it, it's not a board's decision. And so I can't tell you, put him on, take him off, do this, let him drive, and things like that. That's what, that's what you're for, and you bring the message and do that. That's good, I like that. But the rest of what you said was about the outside talk. Several reports recently of this going on, and that's not a good way to work, that's not a good, that's not a good team building thing. And I'm a, I'm a big boy until I hear it directly, I think it's going to be a lie, but I heard there were some disparaging things that were said about me and some problems that I was causing with the fire department. If that's the case, I expect the fire department to tell me.
No, you expect me to tell you.
Exactly. I expect you to tell me that. But I think if what you said happens, and, and if I misunderstand you, and ask the town to correct me, if I, but if I understood you, you said if that continues, that you would have to talk about leaving people who do these or.
Whatever we're going to do.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
But the back and forth, can you stop?
Yes, sir. That's not a stop. And it's not mean that the firemen, any of them can stop talking to us, they can say, but if it's, if it's anything other than conversation, it needs to come from you.
That's right.
Does everyone agree with that? Mr. Wolf's name?
And anyone that were willing to call me at any point in time, you know, my number for Margaret, I'll be happy to talk to any of, any of y'all at any point.
And I think this council appreciates all of our firefighters.
Yes, sir.
Have you got a copy of the current ordinance?
Yes.
I'd like for you to review it.
Yes.
See if there's some suggestions or some things in there. We're reviewing it as a council, and it may need to be reworked. Last time that that was put together, it was kind of like we was in negotiation sections, and it shouldn't be that way. It should be, let's get something presented to the attorney, let him put it in format and form that, that makes our fire department efficient and effective. And if you would, it's bad, maybe sometimes it does. Comment, you can come back to the council. I don't care if it comes to any one of you individually, and you bring back to us an action, and Mr. Carter is the liaison, and do it however you want to. We just take a look at the ordinance and see if it's changed, and if you think what we read.
Well, we also need to look at our SOPs and SFGs, and go through those again, break them up to eight.
Yeah.
Things have changed over the years.
Yeah, and those are the things that you can do, figure in the department, okay? Anything else from anybody? Thank you, y'all welcome to stay. Thank you for your report, thank you for being here. And we're glad to see, we're glad to see all of Mr. Owens.
Mr. Owens.
And you're one of them, Mr. Owens. You're one of the Darrells. Thank y'all all for coming.
There you go.
I'm late before the grass cover. Yeah, Michael and David's got one in soccer playoffs, regionals.
Where y'all play the models? Where y'all play?
Y'all have a good move on.
Yeah. Good luck.
I bet Serena's got some there too, then.
Soccer? Yeah. I don't know how they, or they dug.
These are the old ones.
This is the old ones?
Oh, okay.
All right, Mr. Tim, tell us a lot of good news.
I love this.
I was afraid of that.
They own seven farms, and I'm a big.
I think it was going good. I don't know what all happened with the inmate situation, but we had it, we were getting stuff done. And then we got, and then we got concession stand, we got a couple things that had to be done before the grants were out, so that's what I'm trying to get to. I did want to bring, we need mirrors for the work truck. When I got hired on, the mirrors were already busted, the taillights were busted, the headlights were busted. I went online and found some quotes, for about 300 or 400 bucks, you can get brand new headlights, brand new taillights, and mirrors for the work truck. I know that the tailgate on it, it was messed up when we got hired on. I drew holes and bolted it back together, and it's worked, it's been here, but it's starting to fall apart again. Be nice to have a tailgate, if not, I can make something work.
Don't tell us that. Don't tell us that, if you make a point or.
Well, I could, I could find a tailgate online for only $600. So, yeah, and that was just a replacement. You can go get one at Landers, at O K Q for $200 or $300.
That's all the money to pay the two.
But other than that, all our equipment's up and running. We even fixed a sub pump, it's working and running. The only thing is, we don't have the right hose to use it to suck water out, so we've been using the one from Burn if we have a major leak. They, Burn has been letting us use their sub pump if we need it, if we have a major leak or something. But other than that, we don't have any.
Did you say a sub pump?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have one?
No, we got one, but I talked to David about it, the old man's guy, and he said it was no good. And we had, there was a whole air compressor out there, the compressor didn't work, so we took parts off of the motor and put it on the sub pump and got it running. So it does run, and it does suck water, but we, we have to have that drain hose for it, we don't have the right size hose for it. But we did get it running.
Did you take that pump to R and M?
R and M.
They pump, pump repair place in Chippewa?
Well, we, we can do it ourselves.
Did you tear up a compressor to do it, though?
No, it was not working.
The compressor's not working?
Yeah.
It was, it was the old compressor, and it was off 20 part, so we just took the carburetor off of it, put it on that one, it come right up. So what we did, because the pump was, I think the pump was like $2,400 online, when I looked it up. So we did get it working. We got another pump out there, hooks the carburetor, but it just, it don't, it gets, it gets clogged up every time, so this is a more easy.
Okay, so tell us what you think you need to make it work.
I think, I believe it's a three-inch line. Almost, they use out there the fire hoses, it was three-inch, I believe. I'd have to measure. But I know we don't have the right one to hook to it. We have the one, the hooks to it, it drops down and holds the suction water out, but has to have the hose on to build up the back pressure in order to get it all the way to suck out.
You need a discharge line.
Yes. But other than that, I think we got everything else.
Can you get that to a local park store?
I don't know where to get it.
We get it through USA Blue, I'm sure.
Okay, because Weneer don't have them, I checked with Weneer, and they don't sell them. And I don't know who else has it.
Anything about there? Little park or something? Not sure, no.
I know. He said Harbor Freight should have one.
Harbor Freight.
They sell it, I think, yeah.
Harbor Freight, yep.
Other than that, that's about it, and I think it's going good other than that. And my question, I also had a question on the, I don't know, whole situation with Dallas. I don't know if he's going to come back, if he's not going to come back, but my concern with that was, he said he wasn't going to want inmates. If he doesn't, I know he was hired on, he was hired on before, whole inmate thing, is a way that if y'all did hire him, or keep him on, if he can stay long enough for y'all to hire somebody else, that way by next year when grass season starts back up, we can have somebody that can actually supervise inmates.
Well, he turned, he turned everything in, right?
Yes.
Well, I assume he's quit, okay? And I presume that we should go and advertise, and he can go through the same thing, to hire somebody that'll work. That's my pivot on that. I mean.
I think that's my point of view on that.
Oh, well, if you turn your keys in, everything, that's a sign you quit, to me.
My, we were trying to get somebody back in, and.
Yeah.
Ready to do inmates before we started grassing.
That's right, we sure don't want to lose.
But y'all always spent all the money on getting the van, you know, getting the van up and going, all of everything, so there's no sense in just letting it sit in the way.
And, well, that's true.
Because we did get a lot done with the inmates.
Yeah, that's true. Say we're working good?
Oh, yeah. I know the first set, the first three we had, they were amazing. I mean, they were, they still, we used it all day long and not complaining, and all we did was get ready to water, you know, they were happy to just have get ready. So we gave them a get ready, I mean, you seen, I don't know if y'all seen cemetery when they were cutting in, but they did a really good job in the cemetery.
Yeah.
And they were cutting all the ditches, and they cut, and they cut it right, everything.
But you know, another thing we, we found out, he didn't cut, he'd take off and not call in. Well, that, that, that don't make no sense whatsoever, you know? Anybody that's got a job and takes off and don't call in and let the town know, that's terrible, to me, I mean.
We worked good, we got along and worked, and he was here, he worked, we worked together, and everything he's working, so.
Well, yeah, he's very good, why he be doing so?
I don't think anybody's had anything to say about what we're doing.
No.
And before we leave, we'll discuss that a little more in depth. I'm sure, anybody got anything for Tim? Mr. Wolf's name, anything for Tim?
No, he, no, Tim, Tim doesn't do that.
No. Tim, what's the most pressing issue you got right now? What does the? What, what does the town need done worse right now?
Uh, we, we gotta start working on the grants. Uh, we got dugouts that had to be done, uh, we got concession stand that has to be done. We got, uh, what else was it?
Very good.
That, that shed out there, the bathtub cage. Uh, I can do it, but for one purpose, it'll take some time.
What about the, uh, those controls down there that we went to six, eight months ago?
The, the building's down there, the building's up, we just gotta do close.
I'm sorry?
You talking about the tin building we got with the control panels?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, but the building's down there, it's over, we just gotta close.
Okay, okay. I saw some activity there, you, it, what's it look like, like a miniature pole barn?
It's a carport.
Like a car, a carport, then you gonna have to end close it and build a floor?
Well, now we built a floor, 'cause there's water lines in there. What, what we're gonna do is we're gonna use weed killer, kill weeds, and put some more asphalt in there.
Okay.
And, and run a switch in there off the main electric, it's already in there, put a couple lights in there. And y'all said, last meeting, you said you wanted no windows, just a door. So that's what we're gonna do, just took one door.
Okay. Okay. You gonna level that, you gonna level that asphalt and make it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. I know one thing about it, the building was gonna have a floor in it, we was gonna cut a hole out for the controls come through, but that, that's not, that's not...
Well, there's a bunch of water lines running in there.
Yeah.
And I don't think I put a floor in there with all the water lines.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just saying, okay. So, uh, so you think that the most important thing that you need to be doing in the days ahead, when you're not installing meters or disconnecting or fixing leaks, you need to be concentrating on grant?
Knocking grants out, yes sir.
Okay. We all agree with him on that? Okay?
Yeah.
What, what kind of complaints do you have for, for maintenance of any kind?
I have a headache with complaints for maintenance. It's been going pretty good.
Our roads are way looking good.
They're looking good.
And, uh, okay.
We do have somebody over on Forest Ave, and I don't remember the address. He's wanna ditch dug for, I don't know how to do it.
I think some of y'all will meet out there at eight o'clock, uh, Monday morning with Tim to talk with, uh, the Andersons. Where we opened up the road to go to the, between Chad and, excuse me, Miss, uh, Wingate, Regal Wingate, you know there? We opened that road up, you know, or allowed them to use it as an easement going up to Robin Fowler's, it's in the back there. Uh, Mr. Anderson's saying now that it's, uh, causing the water to build up on his property. And that goes, been in there for three years, you know? But it's that going...
About foresting, haven't you?
Of a forest.
It's been our home in three years.
I put, I put them out in dirt there earlier, and I ran over it, you know, about that high, that way. As usual, what I do if somebody complains like that, that way, when that water hits it, it'll stop and go around it. And he's not happy with that. I put more asphalt on it, but I don't think we have to do that either. Do you want the ditch done?
So if somebody can meet out there with, um, Tim and Chad, uh...
I don't remember how I voted on that, but I think it was the wrong way.
But we had ditched them, we had to bring that all the way down Forest Ave, didn't we? And we did a ditch.
The easement goes from Forest Avenue all the way to Memorial, or all the way to the edge of Platte, which is just, you know, like from here to that wall, before you get to Memorial, Memorial's like Irving. And it stops, but then don't it, don't it turn back to the east?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's not where he's complaining, he's complaining right off Forest Avenue there, just between his house and Chase's. His son bought the Regal Wingate house.
Which one's that, that the one with the...
Dragged out from all...
Had the bigger, yeah, had the boogers out from there.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, and the easement goes between those two?
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the east, where's the problem? Closer to Forest Avenue?
Closer to Forest Avenue, yeah.
It's between Forest Ave and when you go back there, you got the tree line, it turns going back to that, President's trailer back there. He, he wants something done all along there, uh, between Forest Ave and the tr, the little tree line before the turn. Do you see the water's coming down?
You know who we're talking about?
Yeah.
Y'all know who we're talking about? That making big figures is great. The public will have you, and you're gonna start creating that sand. You'll have a washing problem if we don't have some mail or something that can go on there. And what we're gonna wind up doing, and you can't see years and years in advance, but what we're gonna wind up doing, trying to help people use kind of the middle of a right of way and go around the planning and, and development orders, because they're supposed to clear grade, grade, clear grade, grub, and stabilize that road. And most of all, what was done, was done by most of the county, if I remember right, is that?
Right.
So...
We can fill the road up with dirt and more asphalt, it's worse looking higher than what it is. That way, when the water does hit it, it goes down to the road.
Okay, the water's coming off of the gray house. The water's coming off the house and the way it's out the road. Coming across the road and onto Mr. Anderson, is that what, is that...
It's coming up... Um, it's coming from the son's house.
Yeah, it's right here.
So, from the side of the road...
He's not talking about waters coming in from where the, uh...
Where Mr. Miss Hughes used to live, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
It's between...
Who lived over next to us.
Oh.
You and...
You and...
He's not, he's not talking about water running from both sides, he's talking about waters running from the west to the east.
Yeah.
Comes across that road, spills on him, so we need to ditch on their side. We need to ditch on his side, we need to stop the water from hitting the road. Is that right? Tim, you agree with that? So, can you, can you, with our, with our backhoe, do we have a round bottom bucket or something? Can you go in there and, and do a little swale or something?
I do a ditch, but when you do something like that, don't have to have like drain down the road or something?
Well, you wanna go to the ditch of Forest Avenue?
Put a ditch on some other side of the road?
Sure.
The ditch is on the other side of the road on Forest Ave?
On the ditch there, on the right side of the road there.
That's why I said just, get more dirt through it.
Have a ditch on the, on the north side of Forest Avenue?
I have to, I don't think, I might have to walk thirteen minutes.
We're gonna have a ditch on both sides of the road.
That's right.
If we build up...
What I'm, what I'm thinking, Tim, and, and, and you know, and you're the operator, I, I'm just trying to get a hold of you. If we took that water down to Forest Avenue and then turned it back towards seventy-seven, you're saying there's not a ditch on...
On the right inside now.
No, well, what do you call a right side?
If you're going up Forest Ave and the Palace Palace, it's on the right, there's a ditch there.
Okay, on the north side. So there's not a ditch down there, there's not some coverts in there and a driveway?
There's a covert down there close to David's, but it's, it's where that ditch drains out from the road to the...
There isn't, there isn't a covert in there on, uh, next to Mr. Anderson?
Nope. That's why I said we can just build up the road and more asphalt, that way when the water does come down, hit it, it just drains off to the road. And that's the best thing we could do, probably, do that, dig the ditch.
The way you probably wouldn't have to build that up much, with it, with some asphalt and that, uh, some loaded dirt, just go in there and put some more asphalt, spread it that way, builds the road up higher, that way when the water does hit it, it just goes around the road and goes in the yard. Oh, yeah, right.
That's the only thing I know to do. If you did a ditch, then you gotta dig down the side of the road. Just simply run in the yard.
Well, it may be, it may, we had to maybe do it like Mr. Hatt, Mr. Smith, uh, with, do one thing at a time, be the least, the least, uh... Expensive at that time, consume that time, if it's built up and keep the water, and then we had to dig a ditch, dig a ditch later.
Yeah.
Get the engineer to come here, okay?
That's, yeah, we might could do that. Has Cliff, has Cliff got any, thing left in his gift bag? She said she didn't know.
No, I don't know, I don't know if Cliff's got anything left in his gift bag or whatever.
I don't remember what Julie said there.
She said...
Might be an engineer in.
I think these are two ways to build a road, so go around and just watch them.
Is that something you can do with the equipment and material that we have?
Yeah, I can do that.
If that's something we can do in-house, that is our right of way, I think. I think we can do it in-house, I think. And, and I'm sure Kenny might help us with the...
Dirt, obviously.
Yeah, we just get a load of dirt and asphalt, dump it off at the Palace Palace, and that way it's right there, and we can go there and fill up the road, and he just chooses what he do it.
Okay.
And if that don't work, we can take some next up. I just don't understand how the folks suddenly have issues.
I'll, uh, I'll go by that way on the way home, something, and look, I, I haven't noticed any, any sand or any infiltration of his yard, but, uh, just passed by there.
I just built a little mound over it earlier, just earlier today, and he's not happy with that.
Yeah. Okay, e-anything else you have to tell us?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we want to hear Steve? I don't know how big a hurry you may be, have you got any activities going on or anything, or if we don't go ahead and address his other question about the inmates and things like that while, while we're here?
Let's just go ahead and do it.
Do it now. If you don't, don't get any smaller weight, dude. Uh, I, I personally, uh, I personally hate to see Mr. Carter leave us, uh, but, uh... He apparently has. I think all the work he did, but we'll be, the tenants and some other things, we, we need to, we need to address it. Uh... One of the things we don't want to do, uh, Mr. Wolf's hand, I went with Mr. Anderson, we went with Mr. Wolf's hand, was able to talk with the...
No, you did it too.
Well, we, we, we did it, uh, Mr. Wolf's hand represented the council, but we, we went together and we talked to, and got inmates back. They've done many inmates in Wolf's Hall in several years. Now, I, I don't think we've had any since it's stolen, not, not much of any. And, and I don't think we can jeopardize that relationship. Uh, uh... I think if, uh, I think if we want to maintain that, we're gonna have to do what Mr. Wolf's hand said, and, and that's to advertise and, uh... And really vet it, because whoever comes needs to know upfront. You made a good point, Tim. When he came, we didn't have inmates, and he didn't sign on to, to inmates. But that became what we needed him to do. If something comes up tomorrow that you didn't do two years ago, we, we need you to do that now as part of the maintenance department. We, we would expect you to do that, or, you know, for, so, so that's what we need now, I think. And, uh... What, this is a workshop, we can talk about, we can put on the agenda for action, but, or we can call a special meeting, or we can ask Mr., Mr. Carter about him leaving the job, leaving and, and it is, I understand that he wasn't bitter, blah, blah, no, no argument, anything like that, he's just...
He's brought his keys and phone in, played them on my desk.
Yeah. So, if we can go ahead and advertise, I would like to do that, if we can, and I first, uh, as quickly as we can, uh, come together and book it advertised. Does that job description need to be reworked before we do that, make sure that we include inmate supervision in it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you, can you manage that before, before it's advertised, so whoever picks it will know that inmate supervision is part of the job description?
Yes, good, that's good, put that in there.
Yeah, that'll know upfront if they apply that, that could be. And see, that, that also helps us eliminate, uh, people applying that has a, a background, that won't care because, uh... If you've been an inmate before yourself, you can't, you can't do that, so... Uh, what, what does everybody think?
I think we need to advertise as soon as possible.
I do.
And, uh, hand that in?
I do to, with your letter.
Mr. Jeff said we need to send him a letter, you know, official letter, even though he brought his, uh... I would, uh, go with the abandonment, termination route, and send him a letter, let him know that he's been no show. And he's abandoned his fish, uh, position in the county, and only conclude that he is voluntarily terminated, his only employment effective immediately. And he's already turning his equipment, then advertise the position, if he reappears, disregard the application.
Now...
But this was right before he...
Before, yeah.
Before he came in.
So, so some of that, we don't have to make an accusation that you could ban it, we can just say, uh, based on your resignation or your offer of resignation, whatever it was, uh, that we, we appreciate what you have done and, uh... On the advice of our attorney, advertise the replacement, and thank you for your service and stuff. We can, we've made the letters courtly as we can, but they know that this, that the attorney has given us advice. That's all we gotta do. Is that all right with you? Yeah. I don't know, I, I, when you relate to Mr. Carter telling him how this went, we're not doing motions in sentence, but we're, we're most of a big doing business, not that we should run from grants, we're gonna have to have a special ten minute meeting one day next week or something. We need to get that done, because we don't need to wait two weeks and, and take the chance of losing those inmates, I don't think. Y'all agree? Or you agree?
I'll email him tonight and see what he says.
And Tim, you know, when we do get the candidates in that, that applies for a decision, we'd like for you to be here to ask questions too. Would you do that?
Yes.
Okay, good, 'cause you gonna have to work with whoever the other, Margaret is too, or, or... I, I don't, you, you'll come, so that's fine.
And if we were a little bigger, I would think you and Margaret and other employees would, would make this decision, or make a recommendation back to us. I think that, what you said.
That'd be good.
Because that department head is the one that's got to work.
Yeah, that's right.
And I know we can't take action on that, but I think we have a consensus that that's what we'll do. Anything else, Tim?
Yes, sir, it's it.
Anything from you related to maintenance, monitor?
Nothing.
Anybody from the council?
No.
None.
Thank you, Tim. And you're welcome to stay also, I know you've got a little further to go to, to your business, you're welcome to stay.
And a house full of young ones.
And a house full of young ones.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, we appreciate what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate what you do. All right, Mr. Steve?
Yeah.
You tell, you tell us a good view.
Y'all have recorded your practice.
Okay?
Yeah, I wrote my minutes.
That's good.
We had a busy quarter. We started taking forms for soccer in August. Uh, we started practicing in September, we got enough for two teams. I actually had to turn kids down, 'cause I didn't have enough for the third team. And I couldn't, no way I could make it work, but I did put a couple of them on bigger kids, which their parents agreed, but some of them went away without a play. But, uh, we practiced on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We started building the Honda House in September, we got it built in three weeks. Only took us two hours to tear it down, I think, for that one, it took three weeks to build it. Uh, October, we started playing against Chippewa teams. Uh, we opened up our Honda House on the seventh, and it was every Friday and Saturday from eight to ten until our Truck Street night on twenty-ninth. Uh, the four and six-year-old team, soccer team, played their last game, um, the twenty-seventh of October. The twelve youth team went to playoffs, they played their first game on the twentieth and won. They're playing, actually playing right now. That's why I bet they had to run out, yeah. Um, overall, I mean, I appreciate the fire department helping me. Uh, this was a good soccer season, the Honda House was a blast, I mean, I haven't heard of any complaints, I'm pretty sure there was a couple, but I haven't heard any. But, uh, we, uh, just trying to be there for the community, and I think we've had the last couple months, we've been there. Now it's time to get some of these grants done and wait for baseball and softball.
Any idea how many people passed through in a month?
There, there were, I don't know, at least eight hundred. Um, they cooked over eight hundred of hot dogs, they were gone, but they were giving some people two and something. But we had lines all the way from home plate down to the fence, wrapped all the way, or, uh, to the corner of the thing, and they were staying busy, just... Uh, we ran out, we ran out to get, uh, candy. I told them, "Why don't you bring everything?" "Oh, no, we'll..." Oh, no, we'll save some for Christmas, I said, no, we always had some for some back home who's dressed up. But we did, what we had left and what the city had, we all put it back. So we got plenty of candy for Christmas, for the town and the rest. So ain't gotta worry about buying candy, but we got the big old sacks full. And if I known all the kids wanted airheads, we could've saved a lot of money, just buying airheads.
That's what we had left, airheads.
Well, no, that's what y'all thought we had, we're getting, they were all grabbing airheads, they always love airheads. But, I mean, we did, we had a pretty good season, I enjoyed it, kids enjoyed it. Planning on, and y'all are more welcome to come, the 18th of this month. Planning on having like a little dinner right here and give awards out to the soccer team and the fire department who dealt with the haunted house. And have a like potluck dinner here on that Friday night on the 18th at 6 o'clock. So y'all are more welcome to come and see the kids that play and parents and- I survived, I like killing. But playoff, I've been told my coach at the playoffs because every time I was there, wasn't there, they won. So I wasn't there last week and they won, so if they win tonight, then I ain't gonna be the best one, if they lose, I'm going. They're playing the number two team tonight, so. And we could've beat them the end of the season, but they were just starting, it was like the second game, but these kids came a long way.
Are your soccer and football, we're not doing football this year.
No, no, this is-
Are your students, are your children the same ones that's into baseball?
Well, most of them, but there's a variety because some kids like football, some kids like soccer. Some kids are just soccer and not baseball or football. So we get a genre of all, you know, different kinds. I mean, I've got, I've got girls playing on the 12 youth that they don't play any other sport, but soccer. And I hate it because Vernon and Chipley, if they high school had soccer like the other, they would have good programs around here. There's some kids are really good. You know, my son went to Dean Bosa, transferred this, this, that year just to play soccer for Dean Bosa. And he graduated, he went burning all his life and transferred just to play soccer. Because Vernon didn't have soccer. But, but yeah, I'm looking forward next year, we're looking forward to baseball and softball. And I'm looking forward, hopefully after we get everything done, start an adult softball thing, you know, league, have something extra. It's still in the works, it's just, we got so much work needs to be done up there. I don't want to get it and then we can't, you know. So hopefully the dugouts and everything, that one field will be ready. As soon as that one field's ready, I want to start taking applications for adult softball and get with some of these churches and play against the churches. Cause I know there's a lot of churches in there.
There used to be a church league in Washington, but it's mostly in Chipley where there's a dozen churches.
Well, there used to be a church that come up here like twice a month and play softball.
The bridge.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, I think we're looking forward, I think our horizon's expanded with these grants and doing, you know, getting everything done. I'm looking forward next year to being a brighter year.
Yep.
I mean, hopefully.
Of anything, of any expenses we had or any income we had, did we break even? Did you, is your budget okay?
Yeah, we, the haunted house made a few dollars. I mean, it didn't lose, which is good. Soccer, you know, that's just given on them, but the haunted house did get, I mean, we, we did get, we probably did. But-
Not losing, it's good, making a little bit better?
Yes, yes, sir. But, got any questions?
I don't have none.
You might lean on, you should have a bone.
Well, no, I don't.
He's up there all the time, he knows what's going on.
I go down and support you, but I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't have no questions, to be honest. You do good and we thank you for it, I do, and we all do, you know.
Well, I, well, I tell people, and this might not, I tell people, I don't do it for me. God took me, they can do it for him. So he gets all the glory, I'm just, I'm just a vessel. And I owe the, I got to the fire department, if I lose some money, I might come and help them out, but I'm just too old to do that. I'm happy out of breath, they'll be calling a mess on me before we get halfway through the yard with the fire.
Hey, I don't have any questions for Scotty. Thank you for coming, I know you're anxious to learn to see how that game's going.
No, I'm gonna-
You're not going?
No.
You're not going, Gene, you said that.
No, I'm gonna do it.
All right. Well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
We appreciate that and I like the format that you gave me and I can, I can look at these, I might also rip off what you told me tonight. That couple of days, I can look at that and do a-
Well, I actually have something this quarter I could back up. It's usually, you know, off-season, so I'm saying, hey, bud.
Okay. Ranches to the fur, Governor Wolf, lost from Jen, we have ranches to the fur.
Okay. Water payments that we've taken in total cash since August the 1st is $49,000, below $49,000. In August, we collected 14,636, September 16, 646, and October 17, 736. The collections review is, and first of all, let me say that Marcy is working diligently on getting these collection reviews down to- We have sent two, or she has sent two accounts to collections. The liveout program is working now. Tasha Hammock, they have paid $380.33. Now, this liveout pays for water only, it doesn't pay for garbage. Kathy Hughes, they have paid $700 on her towards her order, paid it up, she's got credit. Paul Ford, they've paid $84.26, he's been approved, we're writing on some of the checks still, so that's why some of these are still on the reviews. Michael Oral, 71335, Rebecca Owens, 38583, Jeremiah Mackton, 8838, Darnania Townsend, 19470, Richard Wosonham, 11438, Sharon K. Patrick, $888. And we're waiting on a couple to get their completed applications in. This is ongoing, once we submit these and they're approved, we submit them on the 20th of every month when their account comes past due and they pay that, state floor pays that water bill.
Is this like the lie heat, only this is water?
Yeah, this is a lie out, yeah.
For a heat.
Yeah, same thing. And-
And these figures you just read to us, as in 2016, 18,000 collections?
Yes.
Or they were already like, they're already in there?
They're already in there, these are all coming out, you know, the- And she has been on the phone yesterday and today, all day, everyone, these people have been contacted and they are aware that we will be, we will be blocking, you know, and we have locked several.
I see one that's at 900 and one is a 4.
Oh, damn.
36, 364. Well, the 900 one is 227 and we took action only as last month to improve $100 plus.
Yeah, and she paid her first payment and her current, so she is doing what she said.
Okay. And then the next large one I see is 245.
That is, y'all took action on that also. She's paying $100 a month. We got one that was denied, account number 63. She was denied because she's over income. We asked her to send a letter to y'all, asking for a payment process, she did not. So I instructed Marcy, unless y'all made other actions, this account will be locked on the 30th of the month.
All right, Tim. And then the one down there, I can begin and I can understand the, that's the top, the-
Yeah, they pay.
Okay, they're-
They're paying, they're paying.
Their current, their current plus one, if you ask it, 448, I recognize that one, there's another one, so. 168, it's about $359. Number 63, you said?
She didn't, we asked her to present a letter to y'all, denied, for it to be added to the agenda next week. We have not heard from her, so it was, it's just gonna have to be made up.
357, we took action on that one last time. And on that one, I saw the lady and she was so appreciative, thanked us, thanked the council several times to me.
But if you look at hers again, 54, as I told y'all the other day-
The same, the same one there?
Yeah, 54, the job, the ones that y'all took action on last week. You see that bill is $317.86 for this month, that was a residual, we read, we told them they had a lead and they had some, before they fixed it, they had this match, and we told her there was nothing we could do about that. But y'all said one time in the minutes, it's one time in the minutes. We, number 119, we got a voucher there from Logan Action that will be paid.
Anything in here that's in the 100 plus minus, between 100 and 200, that could be just a current bill and-
Yeah, cause the rates, that'll get-
And the one that just come out, that could be, that could not be the beginning necessarily a problem, because there's a lot of zeros out there.
Yeah. And like this number 71, he came in today, paid his up after this report was printed. And everybody else is going to be here. If they're not, we're gonna make a, make a position on it. And if the lady hasn't sent a letter by next week, they go before y'all, it's just gonna have to be locked.
Well, that's, that's making a lot of-
You're making a lot of costs. And the liveout, the state is helping so much with these people, you know. Because, you know, we've got all their income records in here and we want to have them make it, you know.
Yeah. When you, when you look at what we're taking, at 49, $50,000 that we, that the city had that was in somebody else's pocket.
Yeah.
And-
In three months.
In three months, we're back to $50,000, you know. That's not extra money, that means budget that already is somewhere, it's often what we want to take in revenue to match the expenses, so.
And I am, you know, I am very pleased with Marcy, she is doing an excellent job. I hope she stays with us, she seems like she will, but she is diligently working on getting these water collections in line. We all will see, you know, what that we're, we're working on.
One thing that's a trouble thing about this is having people from over there that I don't know, we don't name from around here.
No, I don't do a lot of that.
They name the water from Wolfsoil, Wolfsoil anymore.
And if y'all are looking around at the rental properties in town, y'all can see a lot of progress on that.
Oh, yeah.
It is going good. Mr. Smith has come in with vengeance, you know.
And that's good.
That's very good.
Amazing.
I do say. He is cleaning uptown and telling his renters that they can stay and rent, that they will also be, their yard has to be cleaned and their bills have to be paid.
But we say, we say thank you to you, don't we?
We do.
We cheer you.
Okay, on my grant updates, we've got the poles installed at George Rogers Park for the lights. The lights are a key, they're being installed within the next couple of weeks. With the inmates help, we are completing the fence and repairs out at George Rogers Park. When we start on, our picnic area is complete, if you go out there and look, we got a brand new picnic table and a nice grill out there that we have to see you need in the ground. And we're gonna revamp the restroom out there, then we'll be ready to close this, this out, you know.
You said fencing, that's, that's the field fencing, that's like, that's like perimeter fencing for that park.
Apostle Palace Park, the bat, the batting cage, lighting is complete, they used it down there seven nights, it looked really good, LED lights. The nanny is here, we're waiting installation on that. The dugouts are waiting on demolition, we got a contractor coming in to redo those, we contracted an ABC fence to do those dugouts where they were dug, you're right. The carport picnic area are installed, we're waiting to get it covered. And we're requesting the amendments to the grant that y'all voted on last week, we're waiting on the state for that.
I was, I was lying about you, the carport picnic area-
Is here.
Say that, say that again.
The carport picnic area that's over the control is gonna put a little picnic-
I was asking you about-
Yeah, it's here and installed, we're just waiting to close it in. So on the Second Avenue project, it's moving pretty fast, we're having bi-weekly infrastructure meetings on those, we're just staying through team meetings. We've completed the environmental review and we're waiting comments from the tribes and all. And we're well on our way to being close to bidding that project. The environmental review is underway on the Collins House, we should hear back some comments from that next week. We had our first teams meeting with them this week and we have bi-weekly infrastructure meetings with those also. These, actually, these meetings are good, you know, the state is here and they're overseeing, they're doing their job and making us do ours.
On that, on the Collins House now, we have the rental like that, is there, what, where in, where in time do we make a determination as to remodel or replace?
Yeah, we actually get the environmental reviews done and all that, you know.
So whatever comes out of that, they may even recommend that we do-
I hope they do.
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wonder, could we, could we offer to, could we take silent bids or something on that? Could we offer this circus property to be moved away?
I think we can.
It's really, really a nice city house, someone can buy something that's there in some place. I hate to see it torn down, part of the history of it, of course, but I hate seeing anything torn down as many people as are in houses, but then the side of that east could not be a one, it's cheap, you could remodel it, I don't know. But that'd be way down the Latin, way down the road someplace.
But they're coming, you know, our grants are coming along, we've met a couple of times on the mitigation projects on Coral Lane and the Weet Drive. We had our first meeting on those this week also. So we're, and I, like I say, Marcy's doing great because I am so tired with these grants right now that I, I take a payment every once in a while, but I have to figure out how to do it now.
How's she with the public?
Very good with the public, very good with the public, very, all around, I am pleased.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And by that, and by Tim, you're the one that's gotta work. Until, until we get complaints up here, you're the one that's gotta work. Okay. And our grants for the second, for the next phase of Apostle Palace, that will be spring of the year that-
Well, we're hoping to apply, video, as money's left and there's space. And if we can, we're calling for file inspection as soon as Steve gets it all cleaned up there.
It'll be clean tomorrow.
We're getting final inspection and then we should be able to close this one out rather quickly and apply in this phase while they got extra monies that they didn't use right now, otherwise we'll have to wait the spring.
That'd be, that'd be good.
It's good because not a lot of communities are ready for one yet.
I don't know that if we applied, that we'd be ready by next Sunday, but as much, as much difference as what the original plans is gonna make, I know it'd be good work. Mr. Wolfham, you got anything?
None.
Or Margaret, or anything for us to discuss?
No, no, I don't have nothing, I may know it.
I think the last thing I have, if, if the water management thing, the water legal thing continues to improve like it is, rather than just looking at those reports every month, could we start doing them in this workshop?
That's all we're doing, that's the workshop, we're just on quartering now.
We didn't have, oh, we had, okay, you're right, we had the delay or some things like that we did with before, we don't have this full report.
Ever done.
Okay, okay, is that all right, we continue to do it fully?
Yes.
All right, we are, yeah. It saves some time, I mean, if we're gonna have this meeting, it saves some time on another meeting, we don't have to go through every round. Mr. Carter, you have anything for the-
I'm good.
Mr. Carter?
I was gonna ask you a question.
Yeah.
Do you have a chance to talk with Kenny about being a circle?
It's on their radar, Walker has, yes.
I talked to the county manager and he has put in, um, he has, he has told me that he has tried some, he's tried some approaches. And I told him that- And, uh, I, I told him that if we could do anything to help him with those approaches, that we would be glad to. Letters of support and contacts and things like that.
Yeah.
He's got a lot going on. I think I caught him by surprise when I asked him and, and he, he, uh, I wouldn't say he was a basic, but he kind of stumbled around like, you know, I really need to know what I'm talking about before I answer you, so. But he said that is one, when we got our grants, and we told, we told him, we got our grants for the city. He went back to the board and says, it just makes good sense because you connected a major state highway to a major feeder county road over here. Said you'll be paid from paved road to paved road. And the only two roads except for driveways, uh, that's on there is, is gonna be paid. I think he overlooked, is it Broward, Broward, uh,
Wood?
And, and, uh, Finch.
Broward.
The one that goes besides, besides Carlos's, I think that's actually a road that is, it just serves for one place. It's like a driveway, but I think it may be on the, that's it. But if it is, that's only road that'll be paid from seventy-seven all the way to behind you. All the rest of the road's gonna be paid, that's the only road. So, uh, if they, if he can get his rent, he's wanting to join us with, with paving. Sounds good.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question. Um, you, I think I heard you ask Margaret the other day about checking with that guy about the, a business coming to us on a store or something?
Yeah, were you gonna think there was a court on that?
No. Haven't heard either.
That was a short answer. What did he say?
I haven't talked to him.
Oh.
That I know of.
Well, I left you a, I left you a message. You said you was gonna go back and play it.
I did, but it wasn't, I didn't, I couldn't, it didn't come through. I was gonna call you back about that. I did not get a message that come through.
Okay, cause I knew that you, that you'd done that and I was just wondering if you was up.
No, I want to get, I didn't get the message, so when it come to play, it come up and it says, I need you to, and then it went away, nothing else on my phone. If you can let me know what it is, I'll check on it.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, that, that came here, we've run around to places, if you could just check with him and see if there's anything moving on that?
I will, I reserve.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Mr. Paul, you want, you want to read us tonight? Thank you.
If you want to.
Thank you, thank you for being here. We'll stand adjourned till.
Seventeenth.
Till the week from tonight.
Unless we have to do something else.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, y'all, where's that microphone at?
Your microphone?
Your microphone?
We, we did agree that if, but.
How did I do that?
Carter says that she can go ahead and advertise. We did agree for her to advertise. Uh, don't turn it off. I, I, I adjourn the meeting. Let me, let me, uh, this is, this is like preaching. This is my second close. The thing that Adam talked about while I go, a hundred dollar blind, two hundred dollar, uh, uh, dryer. That's, that's in, for limit. And if their budget has got that in there, can't, can't she go ahead and tell him to go ahead and do that? We don't have to come back two weeks and blow up this.
I'll save you two hundred dollars. I got a two-year-old dryer. We just upgraded.
Yes.
Take it in half. It's only two years old.
Oh, it didn't have, oh, it didn't have a hundred dollars. Thank you, okay. Thank you. Will you, will you communicate that to Adam?
I'm fixing to go around with the fire trucks now to.
Okay, and you'll let him know about the blinds, go ahead and do that. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.